It would rise from the budget relations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Euler.
Here.
Item three point one, city council minutes, motion to approve regular city council meeting dated August eleventh, twenty twenty five, and city council retreat minutes dated August eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move to approve this as presented by Pete Chan.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Adoption of agenda.
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes. Item five point one, presentation of the Warrensburg Budget Cover Fuddle Contest, presented by Jessica Vanderlo, management analyst. Oh, you're already here. Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So as you know, every year to encourage community involvement in our budget process, we host a photo contest for people to participate in, and they can submit images or artwork of local buildings, landmark events, anything that's kind of familiar or unique to the Warrensburg community. So this year we had ten submissions, and the winner was selected by the Warrensburg Arts Commission. So I'd like to thank everyone that participated and for the Warrensburg Arts Commission to open this out there. So the winning photo this year was Blind Boone by Tuanda Moore, and as you can see here, that's the cover for your fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. So yay. Unfortunately, I don't think Tuanda was able to join us. But I have a lovely gift bag for her, and I will be in touch with her to get her that. So thank you all so much. I'll stand for any questions that we have to have.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point one, public comment on the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six annual budget. We are open for comments. There are no comments, so we'll close that. Item seven point one, a public hearing on ordinance fixing the annual rate of levy for property taxes by the city of Warrensburg for general revenue fund, park fund, and debt service purposes for the year twenty twenty five and levying said taxes, presented by Kristen Dorman, Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Later tonight, you will hear ordinances to actually set the city's property tax levies. But first, we hold a public hearing to get feedback from the public. So I will provide the background and info now and for that public hearing. So just some background first. Property taxes are levied on real property, which is things like houses and personal property on things like vehicles and equipment. The city of Warrensburg has three different property tax levies. We have the general revenue levy, which goes to the general fund and can be used for any general purposes. We have the parks levy, which goes to the parks fund for parks purposes. And then we have our debt service levy, which is used to cover the costs of the geo bonds that we have issued. So like for Maguire. When a resident sees their full property tax bill, the city of Warrensburg is only one portion of that property tax bill. There are also other entities that levy property taxes, including the hospital, the school, the county library, et cetera. So we're just one piece of kind of that pie for property tax bills. And just for some background info, property tax makes up about eight percent of the city's revenue for the city as a whole. So to kind of go over the process of how the property tax rates are set, the county provides the city with the assessed valuations for the year. So this is an annual process. The state auditor's office then provides us forms that we use to calculate what our maximum rates are allowed to be based on the assessed valuations from the county. And as part of that calculation process, we have to keep in mind the Hancock Amendment, which is a rule from the Missouri Constitution that limits how much revenue growth we are allowed to receive. So I'll talk about that in a minute when we talk about the actual numbers, because that did come into effect this year. We are allowed to keep the new construction actual growth amount, so that's just something to keep in mind. And we had to notice the public hearing for this in the newspaper seven days in advance. So this process kind of all happens really quickly in the month of August. And I want to make sure that I give credit to Caroline, our awesome finance officer, who's the one that actually did all of these calculations. I'm just the one standing up here talking about it. So now for the numbers themselves. The total assessed valuation for real and personal property for Warrensburg this year was two hundred and ninety-two million approximately, which is about a five point seven percent increase over the twenty twenty four assessed values. Now, this is where that Hancock Amendment comes in. So that amendment limits our revenue growth to either the actual growth capped at five percent, so we're already over that, or CPI, whichever one is lower. The state tax commission set this year's CPI at two point nine percent. So even though our assessed values were up five point seven, we are only allowed to collect the CPI increase of two point nine percent. So because of that, we have to roll back our rates from what they were last year to make sure that we don't collect too much revenue for the property taxes. So the new max authorized levies are point three, four, five, three for general, point one, eight, seven, six for parks, and point nine for debt service. And then a note there, we also do a further voluntary reduction on the debt service to keep true with the statement we made of no tax increase on those bonds that we issued. So we keep that debt service at point five nine, no matter what the maximum allowed value is. So in total, we should see about a two point nine percent increase in property tax revenue for this year. We did account for that in this year's budget. And that is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars total for all three levies across the city. So with that, I will turn it back over to you to open up the public hearing.
And this is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make a comment or come forward, there's no sign and sheet for this. You can just come up. Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Item eight point one, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty five, for the city of Warrensburg. This is a first reading presented by sorry, Mike Craig, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Jessica is handing out hot off the press final versions, formatted documents for the budget. And if you haven't come to realize by now, this is very much a team effort, has been all the way through, and I can't thank Jessica in particular enough, as well as the department heads and their patience and responsiveness. And I tried to do a lot in a short amount of time. So I'm very pleased to present to you the budget. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to meet the three days, take three days of your time in budget retreats, and I found that very helpful. So what I thought I might do is walk you through changes since we last met, and then be happy to answer any questions. Some of you, as I enjoy talking about this, I could talk all night if you want. So as it relates to changes to the budget itself, highlights include that we've updated property tax estimates in the general and debt service funds, as Kristen just described. Updated wastewater pollution control fees for service revenue based on our most recent projection. Updated WPC capital spending to cover the cost of a new camera truck that's proposed in the budget. Loggers contributions are adjusted, reflected the rates that we just received from them, which is an increase. This reestablishes the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, and so standing that back up, it's something that was on the books previously, especially in light of proposing to roll out the enterprise fleet management approach. So an opportunity to set aside some startup funds for that fund and then cash flow the enterprise fleet management model. Added into the CIP projects for that fund was based on the comprehensive financial model and the necessary fund balance coverage. So implementing the comprehensive financial model that we've talked about at length. And then there are a number of individual items that are added, city hall security upgrades, that startup of the vehicle equipment replacement fund, station work at station two and station one, and the police department concrete site work, parking lot extensions at station, fire station two, a storm shelter within fire station number two, tactical armored vehicle for the police department, and then wayfinding sign. Are kind of the big ticket items above and beyond kind of normal operations. And then the convention and visitors bureau board met last week. Marcy had proposed some budget cuts, and they were commendable in terms of the things that she was cutting, but her board kind of redirected her to hold the line, spend down a reserve a little bit to keep services at their current level and not put more burden and responsibility on CBG staff. So those changes are reflected in this most recent budget. A couple more things, and then I'll stop and be happy to answer any questions. On the, well, maybe staying on the budget side of things first. Within the budget, on page thirty-six, is a section called summary by funds. And I'll just walk you through a few highlights there of significant increase. So general fund, as a noticeable increase, that's in part implementing a lot of the things that we talked about, addressing deferred maintenance, implementing some of the elements of the comprehensive financial model. Capital improvement for transportation, same thing, implementing additional transportation work, and that's reflected in that number. General obligation bond debt is really just the amortization schedule, the general obligation bonds, it does grow over time. You'll see a vehicle and equipment replacement fund item with no increase for about the last four years. That's the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, getting it stood back up and taking the fleet management approach. Transportation Development District, that the five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollar number is setting aside the remaining funds from the Hawthorne Transportation Development District and segregating those so that they're accounted for separately, and that's something that we can have available for future use and future conversations. And then there's a noticeable increase in the water pollution control fund, primarily the Maguire Street cost as well as the enterprise, replacing the enterprise force main with a gravity sewer. So those are kind of the large numbers that change there on that page. On the revenue summary side, on the next page, you'll see transfers in a million amount of one million five hundred ninety-three thousand. That reflects a lot of those items that we talked about previously, including the tactical armored vehicle and some of the general fund items. As you recall, we have a target fund balance for general fund. This does spend down some of that fund, but leaves us very healthy in terms of both that fund balance, that target fund balance and the fund balance overall. So as if you look at the budget message, I sincerely believe that rolling out that comprehensive financial model gives us a lot more clarity, not only in the short run, but in the long run, so we can make some of these decisions and feel comfortable that we have the funding sources, the fund balance, have a better sense of how this impacts our finances overall. And we remain healthy in the capital improvement fund, even implementing the comprehensive financial model. And when I say comprehensive, it truly is. We tried to inventory every item that we know to have in our inventory and put a replacement schedule to it. But jumping over to the comprehensive financial model, there are some notable changes there as well. And I'll just walk you through each one of those categories. On the debt schedule side, no changes. I may recall that we talked about the certificate of participation being paid off in twenty thirty, so that represents an opportunity. Certificates of participation are funded through general operations rather than a debt service levy like a geo bond. And so we would have an opportunity when those mature to use that revenue source for some other purpose. I've reached out to our financial advisors, trying to talk to them about the timing of our design work with Maguire and Fifty Highway. The timing of that likely appears that will be into design next year and have that design complete and have a number of the pursuing funding. Hopefully, combination of local funds, state funds, federal funds to put that project together. This may be an opportunity to fund our portion of that project if we need the timing worked out. So having those conversations with our financial advisor. On the transportation fund side, no changes from what you've seen previously. I do want to note that some of the street department operating expenses are funded as street expenses out of that fund. It is budgeted to spend down the existing balance over the next ten years to get those improvements into the street system and then maintain our street maintenance based on the annual revenue once that fund balance is done down. And capital improvement sales tag side, talked about the fleet management approach and rolling that out. In terms of building some facilities, Schneider Electric spoke to you at your last retreat. Since then, they've been to town and looked at solar possibilities as relates to covered parking for the police department as well as solar at the wastewater treatment plants. So the solar credits expire by the end of the year, and so we are on the clock. They're moving quickly, coordinating with myself and staff, and we'll be back to give you their investment grade audit as well as costing and facilitate additional conversation about addressing both just kind of building needs as well as then a solar component for your future consideration. On the community development side, you may recall that there was an aerial photo that was in expensed a general fund reserve. We rolled that into the capital improvement fund. There's no substantive changes. It did reorganize that section, just put it in chronological order of one of the topics that would be undertaken. And I would say that that is an aggressive set of projects for a community development. So it's there. We'll see how much we can get done and what we can't get done. We'll just keep working away at and do future years. On the information technology side, I did apply some inflation to the virtualized server line item. That's a big ticket item, and it does play itself out over time. I just went back in and applied an inflation factor. On the fire department side, Chief Jennings and I had a conversation about the impacts of kind of setting aside our deliberations about a third fire station as relates to some of the operational thing. And so I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to a third fire station. That is something that we've identified and need to have conversations about. The big challenge there is it's not just the building or the equipment, it's the staffing, and it turns into a much bigger financial planning exercise. And so first step in that is a location study and trying to identify, it may very well be, it may impact more than just adding a station. It could impacted existing stations as well. So we've got that kind of calendar, but in the meantime, then that impacts some of his assumptions about operations. And the biggest impact is upgrading the rescue truck from what his vision was to a broader rescue truck that's able to respond in the event that we stay at two stations for a while and need to be able to be more of one eighth response. That number has gone from two hundred eighty-seven thousand to seven hundred thousand dollars. So and I'll be honest with you, I had a little bit of sticker shock. My last community, we just recently bought two. I reached out to staff there, asking them what the numbers were. And I had it in my head, it was less and it was more. Both of them were like nine hundred to a thousand to a million dollars. So that number, while it seems large and seems like a big increase, I don't think it's out of line, given the market, given that particular piece of equipment. Turnout gear adjusted those numbers to reflect two stations rather than three. Station alerting, there's an opportunity for some cost sharing on gathering operations. And so there's a thirty-five thousand dollar line item that was added to reflect our share of that. I believe it's with the ambulance district, and so trying to see how their funding shakes out. But just implementing and deploying computer aided dispatch. Councilman Kushner brought up sirens, which was a good catch. We didn't have that in at all previously. So we've added annual maintenance boards and chips, encoders, siren replacement. And we have six sirens. We've budgeted them at sixty thousand dollars apiece, two in twenty thirty-two, two in twenty thirty-three, two in twenty thirty-four. So that was another big ticket item that rolled into the plan. We added ballistic vests for our firefighters in certain circumstances. And physicals, I had mentioned earlier, that's probably not a capital improvement item. We went ahead and moved that out and put it into operating. And then added a skid steer or a bobcat to, for their training facility and some of the stuff that they do, moving equipment around and setting up. On the police side, they've had ongoing pricing conversations with Axon. And you'll recall on that model, I had each one of those items, whether it's tasers, body cameras, dash cameras, itemized. It's still in the model that way, but there's one all-inclusive price that Axon has proposed. And we're actually getting more services, more functionality for those price. So making positive headway into those negotiations. The then so that totals kind of at the bottom of that spreadsheet. Ticketing software, they'll feature the line item in there for integration with ticketing software for the police department. And in court, I'm going to give Chief Munster an opportunity here to tell you how we currently do ticketing and what ticketing software might look like. We added in a speed trailer replacement and as well as some portable signs. I don't know if you've seen them, but in addition to a trailer, there are solar signs that you just mount to a sign post in place. So factored in a couple of those. And then I think it came up in our previous conversation about a recognition that we need to help for replacing that canine when the time comes. And those between the animal and the praying and everything that's involved, that's not a, and expensive. I'll double back to chief here in a little bit on ticketing. On the public works side, there were a lot of numbers pulled together in short order, and then we kind of doubled back and took a look at those again to check them for accuracy. And there were quite a few that we changed. So one item was removed, the scissors left. We figure we can rent rather than purchase. There are a couple of items that are added, a tilt trailer and a planer. And then there were twenty-one items that their prices were updated, the cost estimates was updated. A number of those were pretty minor, but some of the bigger ticket items, the wheel loader, if you envision the big, you know, four-wheeled articulated loader that they use to load dump trucks. Went from a hundred and eighty thousand to three hundred thousand as we look at pricing. An excavator went from ninety-five to a hundred and thirty, a bobcat loading was from fifty-six to eighty-five. And a roller, an asphalt roller went from twenty-four to seventy-seven. So over those twenty-one items, that added about an additional four hundred fifty thousand dollars to the model. So as we're adding all these numbers, I may recall I had that fun balance chart, and I kept putting in the numbers and then jumping over to the chart to see what it did to the model. And jumping to that conclusion, it really kind of stabilizes. And so the capital improvement fund balance, the lowest, at the lowest point in this model, was in twenty thirty, and it's about three quarters of a million dollars. And then it's able to kind of recover at just a function of timings expenditures. And so it reaches a high of about three point one million in twenty forty-three. In that twenty forty to twenty fifty range, it stabilizes between two and a half million and three million dollars. And that's when all the items are scheduled and replacements taking place and things are rolling kind of more predictably. I would tell you that we'll continue to review it. We'll continue to refine it. As time allows, I'll work on smoothing it out to kind of take some of the peaks and valleys out of it. And then we do need to incorporate the investment grade audit, the recommendations that come out of that. We want to authorize them. That'll impact the model as well. But I would tell you, the vast majority of that all of this is essentially deferred maintenance that we haven't funded in some way. And instead of being, jokingly have referred to it a number of years, instead of it being whack-a-mole, it's now anticipated, scheduled, and we can grow a lot of our business. We have our operations stabilized. Now we can concentrate on kind of raising the water in other areas. So I'm going to pause for a second, ask Chief Munster to talk to you about our ticketing currently and what the software.
Evening, Mayor, council. You mind if I approach bench? So this was issued, this was issued to me back twenty-five years ago, off the same ticket book, because I went through many of them. But when the officer first gets the ticket, we take this form. We start, if we write a ticket, we got to put the individual's name legibly in each box. That box coincides with these numbers. And then you have to locate the ordinances on that little cheat sheet while you're in your patrol car, trying to figure out what ordinance it is to write. These are carbon copied. One ticket goes to the vendor and the other ones go to court. Once they get done writing the ticket, they also have to fill out a racial profiling form while they're doing this. This ticket would take care of all that stuff, and it's, you get the driver's license, you can scan that driver's license, and it puts all the information into a system for them. So here's the sheet that you get, and those are the twenty-five tickets. These tickets don't exist on this form. So you write each individual's name on that line that you write the ticket to. This is what the officer has to. Then after they do that, once they use all their tickets, they have to turn this in at the end of the month, or the court clerks can't match up the tickets with form. So look, I'm fine, dude. You need to see that.
I don't.
So. So while they're doing that, they write the ticket. Then they go back to the office, and they got to enter all the data into the computer. When I started twenty-five years ago, we had a laptop in our computer, and I thought, oh, man, this is going to be great. And for ten years, it's up there for email, and we never did get a ticket right or a printer in the vehicle. So we got to, which I get it, it takes time to get that all up and going. We initially order the citations. There are about twenty-five hundred of them. We'll come for about two thousand dollars. Going to the digital ticket, we'll order twenty-five hundred for approximately two hundred and seventy-five. It's a thermal paper is what it is. The officer initially writes the initial copies, then they enter it into the RMS system when they get back to the office. Supervisors then review those tickets before they go to the courts. Once they're approved, copy then is turned into the records upfront. Records people uh, look everything over, make sure everything's uh, correct. Um, at this point, uh, citations, citations get, if they get turned in upfront, if they don't get turned in, then they get lost and we got to find them. So there's a lot of steps to all this. Then the municipal court then makes the folder for the prosecutor and writes full charge codes onto the citations. Municipal court then uh, writes citations for the code enforcement, also writes the citations for the code enforcement. This will uh, allow the code enforcement to write a ticket on their cell phone and it can dump into the system that way. And it will talk to our system plus courts, municipal court, mini code. So then once the prosecutor comes into the office, he looks at everything and files some decisions and returns to, returns the tickets to the municipal court. That happens once a week on Tuesdays. Um, with this new system, he would be alerted when those tickets come through. He can look on the phone or look in his computer and be able to do it that way. So a lot of hands touch this process, correct? Um, and rightfully so, it has to, because you want to make sure that it's done correctly, that way the public's treated correctly and uh, not uh, anything done wrong. So with that, do you have any questions? Because not only does this assist the officers, it assists the court clerks, it assists our front office, it assists prosecutor's office, everything talks together. And works a lot smoother. Hopefully, man, thanks, that was, any questions for me on?
Yes, so this is.
I might not be able to answer you, but I've tried to do my research on it.
Sure, sure. So this is for an officer on the, you know, writing a ticket for someone street side who's been pulled over, for example?
Um, either pulled over, if we get called for a domestic disturbance for assault, they use these as well and write the assault ticket as well. Um, does that answer your question?
No, that was just part of, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So, so typically wouldn't the person getting the citation get a copy at that point?
Yes, so they get a copy right then.
Okay.
Of, of the summons and that's the top copy.
Right, but so in this new system.
We'll be able to print them out and we'll give them a.
Oh, so the officer will have a printer in their vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, that's the part I didn't quite.
And uh, this will also streamline at them, uh, Doug used to do it all the time. He would come and uh, I would get an earful about the officer's legible handwriting. That it isn't, and my handwriting is not very good either, I really, I got to print them basically to get the legible for everybody, so.
Okay, that was just, I just wasn't a percent sure about how the person receiving the citation gets copies, so.
So the, the infractions that the uh, citation is being written for. Will they be barcodes that they can just scan and it automatically populates?
Their driver's license, I believe the state of Missouri uh, made that rule to where their information, we can scan it in the car. And it will just go right into our system then, off your driver's license.
But, but not, you're not going to have like a barcode that they can scan so that for the citation.
They can chew, they can, they can.
If it's an assault charge, it might have a code fifty two.
I'd have to research that for you, I'm sure.
They're going to scan it. It is in the system, so I actually, because of all the cities that we've worked with, Clinton has this. And so I've been working with it since January in Clinton and it, it, there's a population menu that allows them to put in the different things in citations.
So it's. Okay, so that. So that offender can do that as well, whenever they're looking it up, is that what, is that what you're asking?
Like a drop down menu, they, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so in the system, they actually have their favorites, um, like uh, all these charge codes, it's in the system. And they can punch, if, if it's something they write all the time, speeding, if you're going fifty five and then twenty five and they write that ticket, it auto-populates. Like it drops down.
Okay.
Click of a button, so.
Okay.
And all the ordinances and the mini codes, it will be in the system, so.
Okay.
So, and the only reason I singled this particular item is we haven't really talked about it a whole lot in our previous retreats. And it's an example of kind of investing in efficiency and, and in, in law enforcement, sometimes it's referred to as a force multiplier. We can take out all the efficiencies and the drag and, and let the officers uh, be more efficient. And it, it was amazing to me to learn exactly what our process was, how many people were involved.
Very cumbersome process.
And antiquated.
Yeah.
And antiquated. Now, does this also include the uh, body camera that can then write the reports?
That'd be on Axon, that'd be the Axon.
Something else.
That it is, it's in this model.
It's in that model and it's part of Axion totals.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Yeah, is this live, is it real time, I mean, does it stop for warrants or anything, or is it just really?
Did you take it, it's just for issuing the summons and for city, city, city uh, violations. Everything else will still go to the state. Now it does have uh, the capability writing state tickets, it's just we, we would have to talk to the state whether or not we're going to do that or not, so.
So to Bruce's question, when the officer is in, so he's pulled somebody over, he or she pulled somebody over. He's in his vehicle now, uh, getting the ticket ready and looking that person up. When he looks that person up, does it show outstanding warrants and outstanding?
System that we have already does that.
Already does that.
All this is makes it capable for our system to talk to courts and to write the ticket. For all that stuff to be populated into like a printer, basically like the hard, like the printer's kind of going to have a hard drive. It'll dump into that system and then it just prints that ticket out for you.
Okay.
Our computer system that we have already with CAD, uh, with dispatch, if we run somebody's name, it'll pull up whether or not they have warrants or not.
Okay.
That is some things that we worked on over the years that really came alive back in about two thousand and ten, so.
The other thing it cuts down drastically is paper. Um, when I'm in court, I have boxes of files or every, I have duplicates of everything the judge has and it's all printed. Uh, when I go to court in Clinton, I have this and an iPad and I have about four folders with some forms that I need. And I get my reports, everything, I look at all of it digitally. Um, and so I have it all that way, none of it is in paper. Uh, we run hundred and twenty five to two twenty five defendants per Tuesday, depending on Tuesday. Uh, depending on the college is in session or not. And so there are times where I've got two hundred folders that have somewhere between two, at least two and fifteen pieces of paper. If they have a driving record with any history, they have any kind of criminal history, anything at all. Some of those files are fifteen, twenty five pages long. And it's all information you need, but it's not necessarily something that needs to be printed out all the time. And so that's getting created for every single ticket that's coming through is an additional file for the prosecutor on this. So that, when I heard that this was something chief was interested in, I was like.
Well, you've been interested since about two thousand and sixteen.
I'm, I'm very much behind this.
I would like to throw one last thing and drive this point home. So you see all this information that the officer has to write, that's court date, all their name information, their vehicle, the violation that occurred. All of that and then sign it at the end, right? All right, picture yourself as an officer on a traffic stop with a violent criminal. While you're sitting here writing all this information in and you keep looking up, seeing what that individual's doing. And then all of a sudden, that guy comes back at you or that gal and they attack you. All because you're writing a ticket and you're focused on writing that ticket and not focusing on what they're doing. So just like to drive that home because it is time consuming and it does take away their concentration on what the offender's doing, so. Not that it's a horrible process, it's just a twenty five year old process and needs updating. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
True, more, more broadly, we are proposing spending uh, fund balance, but for things like this, for equipment, for deferred maintenance. To kind of get our house, I, I don't want to say get our house in order, but uh, support our operations and, and up our game. So with that, um, in the information you already had there, I've, I've spoken to the expenditures out of general fund reserve. There's also another category that we talked about in budget retreat, which is identified but unfunded. Those are kind of the bigger ticket items that are up in the conversation, they're not as urgent, they're, they don't necessarily have a immediate timeline. Or they are so expensive that uh, it's going to take a little bit more uh, deliberation in terms of whether they're a priority and have a fund. But examples of that are um, everything from a new public works uh, main building in a satellite location. Um, and training facility for fire, uh, some, some kind of bigger ticket items, but. Feel real good about the process we went through, um, uh, the document that we're presenting you. And then lastly, I think we talked about this in budget retreat, but our intent is we currently give quarterly updates to continue to do that. But uh, continue to monitor our financial performance and, and make adjustments and adapt throughout the year. Rather than just uh, uh, once a year coming back. Um, as we monitor performance revenue wise, expenditure wise, um, we'll continue to have this level of conversation. So with that, I could, I could go on and on, but.
Please go, yeah.
And still, apparently I already have.
I think what we've done, all of us and staff brought to us with the uh, spending down the reserves and like you called it whack a mole over the years. Prior to me being on council, I was one of those people that department director that you had to figure it out and what to do. And you brought up several good things and lots of things that we brought up that have been sitting there on the fire waiting. One you brought up tonight in the fire department, because that's where I came from, was the rescue truck. I believe that's a nineteen ninety six that we're running right now and we bought it used from another fire department. And so I got a feeling parts are getting slim for that old thing. But this is stuff that has to be done. And it makes things safer, easier to operate. Easy, you know, it's going to cut time back and cost for the PD. Things that we need for like community development, the new uh, aerial view. That's over the years, that has made such a difference in how community development, public works, fire, lots of different departments affect. And these are things that we need to continue to keep doing. Instead of holding back and going, well, maybe one of these days if we have, find some money or you do this, it's just, it's going to be better for the community.
So I, building on though, but the, that financial model spreadsheet has about four hundred lines in it. And we can have four hundred separate conversations, uh, three times per topic, or we can put this model together, figure out the interrelationships and go.
Well, I think the work that you, that the staff has done and this council has done is positioning us for a better situation going forward. So thank you all very much for your work.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah. I do have some questions.
Sure.
Shocking, I'll try to make them fast. Um, some of them are just really simple and I think it'll be really fast. So on page thirty of the budget document. The last um, heading is miscellaneous. And then in the charts, the word that, that's used as other, that's the same thing, miscellaneous and other are the same thing. But I'm assuming.
Chris, correct me otherwise, but yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I'd assume, okay, thank you. Um, okay, on page forty. Well. Okay. The community, and so under administration, um, that communications and strategy. So the, the costs, so even though there's not, there's not a person specifically responsible for it, there are two people. There's not, there's not a staff person, that's just a communications coordinator, right?
Correct.
But so the cost there that started in twenty twenty four. Can someone help me understand just how, how that was? So why did, uh, where's that cost come from for, that started in twenty four? That's.
Sure.
Yeah, I can speak to this one. Um, so this division is me and Jessica. Um, so this department didn't exist, this administrative services department didn't exist until twenty twenty four. Um, so that, so this year it's been just me in this budget. Um, but I moved her from finance into my division because she's doing budget and communications.
Okay. So correct me if I'm wrong, but those twenty twenty four numbers probably represent expenses that we have categorized as what would come out of this division now that we've created it. Um, I think our question was, what would be these in twenty twenty four if we didn't have the division yet?
It was just that it's different than the other administrative services areas. So IT, you know, they're, they're numbers there back to twenty one, same thing with finance and human resources.
Right.
It's this communications and strategy.
Yeah, so each of these other divisions existed as their own departments previously.
Okay.
So there was a department, IT was a department. Um, the assistance lead manager used to be also the public works director.
Right.
So that changed, so now the assistant manager is the admin services director. So that's kind of why this division got created.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Like I knew that, but then seeing it this way, I.
Yeah.
I needed an explanation. Yes, okay, thank you. Um, page fifty nine. That, um, under employment, the employment line item, can someone explain that? But I think it's a negative five oh five, four oh five, one twenty two.
Yep, so that is the vacancy credit that we talked about during the budget retreat.
Right.
Um, where we're kind of storing what we're considering savings to the general fund for positions that we think will be vacant throughout the year, we just didn't want to attribute them to specific departments because we don't know where they will come from, so we just decided to keep them in one spot, so.
Okay.
That helped us get started.
So I'm kind of repeating, but from the department standpoint, they're going to see a budget that would support full staffing.
Yeah.
And they're empowered to attempt to accomplish full staffing. And this is the aggregation of any savings from turnover, retirement vacancies, not being full staff, wherever that might be across the general fund.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, I remember that conversation and that makes sense. Um, and just confirming my understanding, so for our city council, uh, next page sixty. Adam is both our, the city councillor and the city prosecutor, right? Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted that straight in my head. And then page sixty eight. Um, the budget detail at the bottom. Consulting services contractual non-categorized and capital non-categorized. Can you just explain those for me?
Capital non-categorized is the wayfinding sign.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
And then the contractual non-categorized, the consulting services, retail. Contractual non-categorized. Thank you.
Gotcha, okay, and so retail strategies, right, we are, yeah, continuing with them, it's the, it's the Jeff City person that we're, we may not be.
Yeah.
Okay, last one, page ninety seven. All right, first. Stretching there. Just wondering, and I may have heard this before, this is about CBB. Can someone explain the difference between outside services and other services, like what, what are those? I know what some of the other expenses are, having worked with that before, but just wanting clarity on those two items.
We don't classify other services or outside services, so I'll have to have help with this. This is the first I've seen this, but I can tell you the services that we do contract out with. And we have the visitor center is clean once a week for rides. We have, uh, when we hire a photographer to come and do pictures, that's outside services. And we have a designer assist for design, design of professional offices, such as the visitor guide.
Right.
That would be outside services, it's, it's contracted services. Um, and then we also have our printer and copier, we have an agreement with them, so that's a contracted service.
Website.
Website, yes, and that, that is anything that we have consulting, I thought, thank you. Anything that we have consulting, so we're talking about the visitor profile study, we work with McDaniels.
Yeah.
Okay, the website, we're working with McDaniels, those are all types of grants. We also have the agreement to assist us with our M and G, our marketing matching grant. And that's thirty two thousand, we happen to have that agreement to. Our marketing matching grant and that's thirty two thousand. We happen to have that agreement to the grant from the state. You know, that's another that would follow along those lines as well.
Great, thank you.
Yes, I hope that helps. I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's great. That is great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
I reiterate what Eddie said, we're all. Very thankful for all the hard work. Everybody put into this, all the departments. Everybody in finance, I know we were facing a four hundred and twenty four thousand deficit when you started this. Got us up to where with staffing and and retirement and everything that we're, we're okay. So we appreciate that hard work and the fleet management system approach is really interesting, I think, for going forward. The energy audit, long term.
Very excited.
Solar panels, fantastic. You have the housing hydraulic survey in there, which I think we're really interested because we have questions about. Housing the community at different levels, whether it's workforce, senior housing, anything like that. It's fantastic. And the hydraulic survey. Is really helpful that in the Bearcat purchase, we're just really impressed with this process. Like Jim was saying, to go out twenty five years, it helps smooth this out because. There's things you can see ten years in advance, you know, with a bond or something. So. Again, we just want to thank everybody who worked so hard on this and we're impressed with it and this is. I think for city council, this may be the most important meeting we have of the year. Because the budget sets what priorities and what we're doing going forward. So. Again, it's so important to get it right and thank you everybody for doing this.
Thank you for giving us three days of your time.
Yes, we have a great roadmap map set for us.
Funny, lots more conversation to be had once we get on this path and more.
Thanks.
So we have a first reading ordinance in front of us.
Right, correct.
Item nine point one, first and second reading ordinance. An ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes. By the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, county of Johnson, for general revenue fund purposes for the year twenty twenty five. And levying said taxes presented by Kristen Dormand, assistant city manager.
I don't have anything to add, so I.
Any question for Krista?
No.
Thank you.
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner.
Yeah.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, county of Johnson. For general revenue fund purposes for the year twenty twenty five and loving said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine point two. Ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, county of Johnson, for park fund purposes for the year. Twenty twenty five and loving said taxes presented by Kristen Dormand.
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, county of Johnson. For park fund purposes for the year twenty twenty five and loving said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine point three, an ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. County of Johnson for debt service purposes for the year twenty twenty five and levying said taxes presented by Kristen Dormand. Questions?
Motion to move to second reading by title only.
Kushner.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Oops, thank you. Osborne.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance setting the annual rate of levy for taxes by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, county of Johnson. For debt service purposes for the year twenty twenty five and loving said taxes. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine point four, an ordinance repealing, replacing chapter eleven of the code of city ordinances. And ordinance five nine four three of the city of Warrensburg regarding garbage and trash. Presented by Barbara Carroll, director of community development. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, mayor and city council. We started service after several years of discussion for residential solid waste service. On March first of this year, with the first trucks rolling on March third, a Monday of this year. So at the end of this month, we will have completed six months of service. And we are, as of this week. Billing zone three for the fifth time. So we bill a month behind and to give you an indication, we're just halfway through our fifth billing cycle. So. We've got about five months of billing when this was prepared for you and. In that time, we have learned several things and those things have found their way into tonight's ordinance. And so this is another ordinance addressing chapter eleven, garbage and trash. You did your first ordinance amendment to chapter eleven, which was a repeal and replace. In December of last year and then a small amendment with ordinance fifty nine forty three in February of this year. Tonight's proposed ordinance would replace both of those actions. With this version of chapter eleven. Much of it is the same, but there are some changes which I'll walk through here in a minute. We wanted to do a full repeal and replace again this time because this ordinance does not get codified. Into the online version or into the printed books until the be end of this year, beginning of next year. So for our citizens who have questions and want and ask our staff. Where's a copy of that? I want to read the policy. I want to read the rules. We don't want to send them to multiple documents. We want to be able to give them one document. So instead of creating a third document to refer them to. We want to do a full repeal and replace tonight so that you would have. All of it contained in one place and we would have one document we can hand people if they have questions about. So with that being said, there are two versions of the ordinance in front of you. In your packet, one is a redline version. It has all of the existing text as well as all of the proposed text. In the same document. The language that you see, the text that you see in red with a strike through it is language we would be deleting. And the words that you see in red with bold font are the words we would be adding. If you accept all those deletions and insertions. You would get the clean copy of the ordinance, which is also prepared and in your packet. There is no red in that document. It is just a clean copy of the ordinance as proposed. That would be the one if you vote to approve it, that the mayor would sign and we would hand to people for them to look at if they asked for copies of it. So with that, please feel free to look at whichever, the redlined or the clean as we go through this. I'm going to focus my comments this evening on the staff report. Where we've outlined in more detail the substantive, the large substantive changes to the policy. So we won't discuss every, every single piece of red text, but if I don't cover something you have a question about. Please feel free to stop me and ask or at the end, ask me. So we'll start with section eleven dash six, which is our first substantive change. And this is where it discusses abatement by the city of a nuisance. And so this would be a situation, these are going to be situations where. A decout has gone delinquent after sixty days and we have terminated service. So they have not paid their bill for sixty days and we instruct constable to quit picking up their trash. They continue to sit trash at the curb and no one, now no one's picking it up. So we can move on a criminal nuisance case through our municipal court system. This, we also have the ability to have the city go through an administrative hearing process. Have the city abated by picking up the trash, instructing constable to pick it up. And placing that charge on the property as a lien. We've added one word to this section eleven dash six, which says simultaneously. Making it very clear that we could run the criminal and the administrative process simultaneous to each other. I don't have to complete one. To begin the other, we'll run those through at the same time. Then we move on to section eleven dash seven. This was a section, sub point C, that is entirely new language. A and B are already there. It's about prosecution again. Where it says in A prosecution, nor shall prosecution limit the city's right. To pursue assessment or collection of abatement costs incurred by the city. Making, city attorney wanted to make it very clear, and we did this with the new language in sub point C. That collection of abatement costs means through a third party collection agency. So this C is making it very clear to people, we can turn you over at sixty days. For, to a collection agency for non-payment on your account. That language is again, word for word mirrored in section eleven dash thirty eight. L, where we talk about fees and rates and charges, but we put it here as well. So that it was clear what we mean by collection of abatement costs. Okay, now we'll move to eleven dash thirty eight and this is really the section where most of the changes. In, in tonight's proposed ordinance take place and this section is entitled rates, charges, fees and payments. And we do find until F and F is where we see the proposed changes. So in subsection F. This is language has been added just to make it clear that both the sewer charges. And the solid waste charges will be itemized separately on a utility bill. So each charge. For sewer, sewer charges will appear on one line. Solid waste charges appear separately. So you will know what you're being charged for each service independently. G, this is the section. That previously talked and stated, and these are the words we've deleted. But previously it stated partial payments made on a customer's bill will be applied prorata to. Sewer and solid waste charges in proportion to the amount of the charges on the bill. And the amount of the payment received of both portions owed. That language has been struck and deleted and instead we would replace it with language that says. If partial payments are received. And the customer indicates how they want it applied to the count, we will apply it in that manner. If no direction is given, we will apply it first to sewer charges and second to solid waste charges. So you have new language there that, that says we would apply it first to sewer. And then to solid waste and if we don't, if we don't get any direction at all. H is an entirely new subsection. And this is one that we started to see. And was brought to our attention after the first couple of months of billing and we've continued to see this monthly. And so staff is proposing a new subsection H. That would place the solid waste charge on a utility bill only if it is in a customer's name for fifteen or more days in a billing cycle. So we have accounts because we're a pretty transitory community. We have accounts that have two accounts on one address in one billing cycle. And this would say that if it is in your account's name. So the example we gave was tenant A, it was in tenant A's name for twenty days. And it's in tenant B's name for ten days. The thirty one dollar charge will be applied if it's fifteen days or more. So in this case, tenant A, twenty days, they're going to get the thirty one dollar charge. If it's fourteen or fewer days, there would be no solid waste charge placed on that billing cycle for that account. And so in this scenario, given tenant B for ten days, they would have a zero charge. Tenant A at twenty days would have the thirty one dollar charge. We did. We did examine five additional billing models. And believe this is the best balance of accuracy and efficiency. For example, we also looked at prorating by day. That would be more accurate, but it is also much more time consuming. And involves manual calculations when setting up new accounts, determining final bills. And assessing charges for additional trash and recycling carts. Those all would also have to be prorated and because we bill weekly. New accounts and it gets set up every week. We can't run the bill cycle till all the new accounts get set up. So it, it significantly adds. Each week to the, to the responsibilities of getting a billing out within a week. And so the fifteen day. Is also pretty accurate. It's the second most accurate and it's far more efficient in terms of time, staff time and not having to do those manual calculations.
I have a question. Are we talking about, when you say tenant A, a tenant B, are we talking about a duplex?
Could, could be a duplex, it could be a fourplex. It could be a rental house. It could be a single family house.
But I think the point in this scenario, same, same residents. One person's moving in, one person, one person's moving out, one person's moving in, overlap in the same building.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm trying to put A and B at the same time.
No, no, there it's.
I got you. Never mind, never mind.
Okay.
I'm okay now. Thank you.
Thank you. My permit, I wasn't catching on there. Okay, so that would, that's sub point H and then I through K are. Really just repeating, making it crystal clear that if you do not pay your solid waste charges. Only your solid waste service would be shut off. It will not shut off your sewer and therefore your water. So all, all three of those are saying the same thing and making it clear that it's just solid waste charges. Turn off solid waste service. And then M and N work together. And staff is proposing this primarily, the changes are in N. But we are proposing that we carve out a military hold. From the vacation hold policy and that a military hold, if we have a member of our community who's active duty. And they have a temporary order, orders for temporary deployment. That our hold would match their dates for their order. That it, they wouldn't be governed by the. No more, no less than three, no more than five months in a fiscal year. That if they. Leave September one and they come back December thirty first, their hold is a military hold and it starts September one and ends December thirty first. So. Create that you're just carving that out as its own type of hold.
And sorry, just related to that, that would be true if that person is the only person in that household.
If the account is in their name. And, and so if the account is in their name and they don't, nobody's going to be there. And they don't want service, they've put on a military hold. If the account was in their name and they wanted service, they want us to pick up the trash, then they just want you. Call and ask for a military hold. It does clarify or have a sentence in it that says if during their. TDY, if they decided they want to rent it out for whatever reason, that makes sense to them. And they do need service, they just call and let us know. We'll take it off the hold and restore service. Those are the primary changes. Be happy to answer any questions about those or any of the changes in the proposed ordinance.
I appreciate that military hold. That's a great idea.
No questions from me.
Questions?
No.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
There's two ordinances that we have to pick whether or not we approve the clean or the red line.
And you're just going to be voting on the clean one. The, the red line is just very alternative. So you can see side by side.
Okay, so we need to read the, the clean one.
It should be just saying that.
Just one.
Yeah, you read the title from the clean one, yeah.
Has it already been read? You already read it.
Once.
Okay, motion to move to second reading by title only.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing chapter eleven of the code of city ordinances and ordinance five nine four-three of the city of Warrensburg. Regarding garbage and trash. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Uh yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine point five, an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a consent to assignment. Of consulting services agreement between the city and Infinitec Consulting LLC. And Sheraton Valley Infinitec Consulting LLC presented by Kristen Dormand.
Good evening. This one is short and sweet. Um last year we entered into a consulting services agreement with Infinitec for some of our IT needs. They are reorganizing their company into a new LLC with a new name. So this ordinance basically just allows us to assign. Those same services that we have with Infinitec to the new company name. And if you have any questions specifically about the agreement, Gary will handle those.
No questions.
Any questions?
Nope, no.
Move those said ordinance be approved by second reading by title.
Kushner.
Second reading. Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute a consent to assignment of consulting services agreement. Between the city and Infinitec Consulting LLC and Sheraton Valley Infinitec Consulting LLC. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item ten, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. We have Lee.
I think he just went to the restroom.
Okay.
We can do it out of, out of order if you'd like.
Then Sandeep. Sandeep, if you would just give us your name and your, come on up. Thanks. Give us your name, your address. And you have three minutes. This isn't a back and forth, but you tell us in three minutes. So thank you.
Good evening. Uh this is more like a personal request. My name is Sandeep. I own a business here in town. Uh it's on seven fourteen South McGuire. We recently, recently did a lot of improvement last year. We spent close to four hundred thousand dollars. And we just find out they are building another liquor store, which is super close to our location. And I was just here to figure if there's anything could be done about that, I'll be able to. Cause some cities don't allow same category business so close to each other. So I would just kind of have that question for the city.
Okay.
We also own a couple more businesses in town.
Thank you, Sandeep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Lee. Hey, Lee, if you would just state your name or address and you've got three minutes just to. Tell us what's going on. How are you?
Hi, my name is Lee Warwick and I live at six ten Laurel Street. Here in town. Um I have had nothing but issues with constable sanitation. They. So there was a route map that was posted at the, towards the end of February that showed my area having a Wednesday pickup. No one has been able to find that map after multiple requests and when I, the map I did receive was one that was dated late March. And one that was visibly altered using Word or some other similar rudimentary altering techniques. My trash has never been picked up on Wednesdays despite the fact they went through my neighborhood on the very first Wednesday. Because my trash was originally not in a constable can due to their failure to get them distributed by our pickup days. I have made multiple attempts to contact them and they have said, no, your pickup day is this and they have not given me any kind of. Change. They have said your pickup day is Thursday and that is what it's going to be until. They're done. Well, I am not okay with that because Wednesday is my. Is the day that I am off work, which is why I remember my trash day being Wednesday. Um the other documentation that I received, I requested was the GPS tracking of the constable truck, which was also doctored. And that it showed a dispatched location of Sedalia. When I have inquired about this, they said that is where they go to drop off the trash despite that being the point of origin of the truck on the GPS tracking. And I would like the city to drop constables so that, and change it so that the individual citizens can hire their own trash service. So that we can go back to having our own trash service and be able to hold them accountable by ourselves. As I am currently not able to put out more trash. Cause originally with my old trash service, I was able to put out two hundred gallons of trash per week. Now I'm unable to, I'm only able to put out a hundred gallons of trash and I'm paying more for that service and it's unreliable.
Uh thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
That's all we had about. Item eleven miscellaneous matters from the mayor and or city council. Nope. Item twelve, city staff update, city manager report.
I'm turning the corner on budget. It's been budget, budget and more budget. Um so I reported previously. Uh that, that Schneider Electric has been in, looked at uh solar locations. We should have more information shortly. And then I'm sure you're all aware that Lions Lake is drained and we're kind of keeping an eye on that. We are having a conversation. It's a, it's a lot easier to get your head around the project once the, the water's out in Lions Lake. So. Uh having a conversation about bringing the designer back in and taking a look at what we see now and see what opportunities we might have. And he's currently on vacation. Uh speaking of vacation, uh the other item that it's also budget related is loggers and we've had some conversation about. Investigating possibilities there. Uh we have some preliminary information, but we'll continue to work on that. And then lastly. Uh if you, if you read my budget message. Merit raises are remained a priority. And so between loggers, merit raises, as we look at our quarterly updates, we'll be. Uh concentrating on our financial performance and whether we can incorporate any of those going forward.
So the plan is um that if we're able to incorporate those, they'll be in place by, for January.
Uh well, at this point, I'm really just trying to quantify what that cost might be. And so there's, there's two elements to it. One is. An upfront one-time uh payment, then there's an ongoing cost. Trying to get clarity about what that is and it's all a percentage of payroll. We'll have to actually calculate what that might be. And you know, as much difficulty as we had balancing the budget, uh until we. Kind of get some of the rest of this in place and get our, get our legs under us. It's hard to say when, if or when we might be able to afford it.
Thank you.
Clarify the cost of living adjustment raises that three percent will go into effect.
Right, and it's the other. May go into effect on January.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to create any false hope about anything happening in January till we kind of get everything that we've done implemented. And can assess our financial performance and our capacity for anything else.
There's more than one option, right?
Yeah, there is kind of an à la carte and it all interrelates and so we'll have to. Uh get all that uh quantified and then see how that, what impact that would have on future budgets.
Okay, thank you.
City staff update, administrative services department. Good job. City staff update, city clerk.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um the only thing I had in the packet. Was information on the city council boards and commission sunshine law training. This is a friendly reminder. It's Wednesday, September tenth from five thirty to six thirty. And representatives of the uh sunshine law outreach office of the Missouri attorney general would be here to present. To the board. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve point four, city staff update, community development.
Provided a written report, I have no condition.
Thank you. Twelve point five, city staff update, fire department.
Chief is at training in Hemmetsburg.
Item twelve point six, city staff update, parks and recreation department. Chris.
Starting this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Twelve point seven, police department.
I'll be in training next week. Uh Major Filler will be as well. It's uh down uh Tentera.
Thanks. Twelve point eight, city staff update, public works department. Bill.
I'll say nothing also. First, there's a lot going on though, you know that.
Yeah, there is a lot going on. On twelve point nine, city staff update, Warrensburg Convention of Business Bureau. We appreciate you making adjustments to your budget too. Thank you.
Yes.
Great, well, the, the board decided to make that.
Yeah, thank you. We will be moving into closed session now. Motion to close part of the meeting pursuant to section six ten. Point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri relating to thirteen. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
I still move.
Kushner.
Yeah.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.